... We couldn't pray to take you. Thank you for all the work you've done. You know, I think we could have a couple of years without you. Well, I pray we can give you what you care best and you know what we care best for. And because we're coming to take you, take you, pray, pray to you for you for courage and for courage. And you can, uh, I pray I understand you, appreciate you, because we will be here for you. I agree with you here, but as I said before, I just pray for you, because we will be here. Because I need that experience right here on the mound. We all are, all for it, not for nothing.
All right. Please place a, place a prayer.
The Republicans to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dexter Armstrong.
Where is he?
Mrs. Kristen Chastain here. Mr. Michael Cheetham.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan.
Here.
Mr. Jason McCray.
Right.
Mr. Keith Mills is absent. Mr. Richard Oliver.
Here.
Dr. Chrissy Oakwin.
Here.
President Louis Kent.
We want to prove again that we, we want to, uh, tell you what, Mr. Cheetham, in the discussion, what you put on, in the house of faith, in the home. What you told me, uh, that you made for our plan to, for the point four, very long. In our way.
Who was it, sir?
The president, uh, they were the, they were the, they were the, what you called it. What you put on, in the house of faith.
Ah.
In the home. From the U.P., this, uh, take action or require us to have community land, uh, and pay, this land will come in. So, Dexter, we just, this, take action request, you know, the mobile home for duration of house to, to suggest it, uh, be something like this.
Thank you for your time, uh, my name is John Murphy, I live in Oakwood subdivision, uh, lot number nine, I'm requesting, uh, what the permanent office here is a hardship executive, put a travel favor, uh, this is my wife here, I'm a caretaker, uh, and my daughter and her husband are gonna move out there and help me with her and, uh, we intend to put in septic water and all that. I need the exception for the, uh, partnership before they do the permits if you'd like.
What do you mean by this, I think we do the, you did, I'm working on a lot of this.
How, how long do you anticipate that being?
I, I don't really know, so it kinda depends on how my, how my wife's doing, uh. But like I say, we intend to put in a permanent septic water, we'll let my trick, it's a forty-three-foot truck trailer, uh, and if need be, then we'll, we'll get a mobile home and put it out there. But I don't have to sell my house right now, I didn't.
We can, we can.
We're gonna be one year.
One year?
You gotta put, uh, time in there, if you need more time out there, come back to vote.
We'll get it, we'll get it.
All right.
What's that, sir?
Aggressive.
On the thing, in the home, what you did.
What's that, sir?
Aggressive.
Eleven A.M. free.
Mr. President, is your show, uh?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the chairman.
Okay.
Mr. State Committee.
Marilyn, Diana W. Davis. Okay.
You require to have community land, uh, and pay. Uh, you said there's a pair of roads, okay, please.
That's correct, and I apologize, uh, looking at my, I have to find away my car, all of a sudden, needed a pair.
You need to pay for community land, you're, uh, you have no good road into the pair. And community land is not being repaired, you know, I think it only, you know.
I understand that, but, uh, due to the fact that, uh, being elderly and with children, uh, and grandchildren having to go to school and, uh, a very, very small business, uh, and paying taxes as well and having to travel, uh, myself with other services, having to come back there, emergency services, having to come back there and, uh, having received, receiving notices from the, uh, United States Postal Services and other services about the road, uh, needing to be repaired and cutting off my Maryland, uh, due to the fact that this road needs to be repaired. And it's not that the whole line needs to be repaired, it just means that a fourth of the section, uh, needs to be repaired, uh, and to upkeep it, so, uh, so it's, it's very well needed, uh, so, um, really asking.
So this is not parish road?
Mm-hmm.
How many houses are on it?
Uh, we looking at, uh, one, two, three, four, five. Five houses.
I understand, I feel you, thank you, on this, I mean, but we, we can't maintain the ones we have that's in the parish, I know we just can't take on new roads right now, especially we're not getting parish road. I understand what you're saying.
We got the public, community public, uh, uh, you know, we're, who are total and dead men, there's a lot of people that's been doing, it's part of the land, we definitely want part of it, part of it. It's a, uh, the cost, what you're saying, is it?
Right. Motion.
You know, it's, cause you put on it. And we love, come here, come here, but.
So you're saying you can't do it because you have any funds?
Don't have the funding, we just can't do it because it's not parish road.
And there's those other parish roads that we have that are in worse condition than that. They're still private.
They can't pay them.
They're private?
We have other roads that are in worse condition than that, and we can't pay them, we just don't have the funding.
And it would have to be brought up to the parish or it's fixed first, finally you can take it.
So what if I, uh, participate in a charity, if you, uh, company do, develop?
You don't, you can't do work on part of the road.
You can't?
No. Not one last work on part, uh, part of the road. I'm sorry, could come with, we can cook, but it was kidding.
Okay. Thank you for listening, and I'm, all right.
Please, uh, thank you, if you might.
Reverend George Turner, uh, I was just gonna share some information with you, they just, just left. In some cases, the, uh, community development block grant and their application, they allow, uh, projects of that magnitude to be included for our possible funding.
And you would have to, to discuss with, with, with them. Okay, Reverend, uh, take action, uh, do you want to, uh, do you want to, uh, do you want to? They were discussing, in the house of faith, in the home, they do, uh, change it. Reverend, you think the take action was deemed as a, uh, a, uh, a, uh, change the, uh, change the, uh, 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 uh,
Debbie Kim, uh, really, I'm not here in that capacity, there's people that were supposed to show up, didn't, so I don't know everything that was on their agenda, but I do know one thing because I talked to Marsha, she came to help me with the house, and it's basically to ask permission to utilize the porch area of the courthouse for the opening ceremonies for their, for their festival or whatever they're gonna, gonna have. Uh, there's not gonna be, like, chairs on the lawn or anything, it's just long enough for them, prayer, you know, introduce people, something like that, so that's all I can tell you, I don't know what else they were gonna bring up before y'all, but that's, if you can consider that, then at least I can pass that on to Marsha that don't get, granted permission or you didn't.
I mean, the, the question myself, 'cause even over the process, this is our first time, even, even getting involved in a, uh, 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 we should have been involved, I should have known more about it.
Well, Marsha keeps telling Mark that too, but he's a little, uh, slow on the draw.
I think we should, we should, uh, whether you're, uh.
And it's not just the town of Clinton, it's actually the parish.
It's the whole.
You know, a lot of people aren't aware of that, but the, it's the two-hundredth anniversary of Clinton becoming the, uh, the parish chief.
Parish chief, yeah. I think we should be aware of it, and we, uh, not maybe expect them.
Yeah.
The parish building.
And I'm, I'm gonna just say how I feel about it right now, the, um, the trees up there are in pretty rough condition, and I know we say we're just gonna use the porch, but you know and I know that it's gonna be people. Oh, yeah, they're gonna have vendors and all of that kind of stuff. And I don't think we should stress those trees out anymore, then they're already stressed out because of the, the drought like here and not having any rain and all of that this year, I mean, we've been talking to the fire department, you have to come out there and water the trees, so.
Well, they, they're not gonna be up on the, right on the trees off, they have vendors, they're gonna be out on the road.
Yeah, they're, they're.
People are gonna walk on the courthouse square regardless of what, what y'all say, they were just asking permission, you know, stand up there at the courthouse square and say a prayer, kind of thing, so.
If they wanna walk up on the ground, you got, the police up there to keep them off, you know, that's.
No, I, well, I just got an opinion in that, well, I don't have a dog in the hunt anymore, I got, okay?
You can't take, you can't take in that, because we don't, we don't.
Well, they, 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 no more.
Not only the, uh, permission, uh, the, uh, liberty, uh, uh, uh.
Okay, I, I think someone's gonna be contacting the, the judge about it, because at one time they actually wanted to get inside your courthouse, and that wasn't gonna happen. Okay, well, thank you, I'll, I'll let Dr. know what's going on.
That we need to know more, have more information.
Okay, and she, she'll be with us tomorrow night, and I'm sure there'll be some, uh, chastising for the people who didn't join tonight.
Yeah, thank you. Reverend, you think the, just take action, uh, request, uh, people want to, uh, uh, uh,
Well, this is Cameron, she's not here. This was the clarity on that, uh, she's in my district on Halls Road, so she's not here.
In table?
Yes, right in table.
Motion, in table?
Say.
It's, uh, what you put on, you know, the table?
Ah.
In the home, uh, uh, uh. Reverend, you think, it's, uh, take action, uh, 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 uh,
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fellow members of the board, my name is Reverend George Turner, at, uh, little, uh, thirty-four seven, uh, turner road in Castlewood, Alabama. For the last sixteen years, I've been trying to do everything I can to bring a court of housing and help those that cannot help themselves. And, uh, I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting you all had, you know, uh, on Grand Center, that surgery wrote later, then I was back, but I was able to watch the meeting on the television, well, on the computer, and I noticed that, uh, Mr. Kent asked Chairman of the, had a, that, only, how come I was not on the agenda when, uh, May sixth? Uh, I actually all, uh, I just had an extension and you all told me to go back to the bank, so I understand that, so I went back, I made my, um, savings on the matter, and, uh, I paid my fee, now, I paid my fee on May the twenty-third, but the meeting was, uh, June twenty-sixth. I don't have enough, but, there's somebody passing around.
You just, uh, you gotta, uh, turn, here you go, forward, hang down for the, uh, uh.
All this has to do with, uh, of course, I'm gonna make sure, and we're gonna, uh, uh. But I have to share this up first, you call me, this is, this is important, just because, the information that a commission provides to the board or to the law is very important, and you all did not, I'm not gonna say they lied to you, but they didn't tell you the truth.
Well, that was, uh.
But anyway, uh, that confirmed that they had, at, at the time.
But what are you saying, that they did not, uh, treat it out?
Well, Mr. Kent asked them, I come, I was on the agenda, and they said they did have a time to put it in the paper, I, I, I paid that fee on May twenty-third, the meeting was the, the twenty-fifth of June. I mean, I have to meet all of their requirements, and if my, if I don't meet their requirements, then whatever I do is disqualified, so how come, when I submit something and they don't do what they're supposed to do, what do I supposed to do?
But these are the same map that has been submitted, that aren't as accurate, there's other landlords and they air them conflicting maps.
That's an opinion.
It's not an opinion, it's, they have maps.
Okay, we gonna, we gonna get to that, we, we won't, we won't, we won't get to that, okay? Now, since you brought it up, I'm going to detail on that, so in other words, there's a discrepancy there because a citizen should not have to suffer or be denied to come on the agenda if they paid their fee and, and provided all the information, at least they could have contacted me and said, "You're not gonna be on the agenda." But that's because they didn't tell you all to, I'm gonna let you know what happened, that's what you all decided, how you wanna approach it, what you wanna do, uh, or what, but if I got to meet requirements, then I want them to meet requirements for me.
That is true, Mr. Chairman, all committed, all citizens, true respect, uh, common terms, to be placed on agenda, and do things according, I agree with you.
Okay, okay, we gonna, we'll go on since you brought it up about the property owners in our way.
Can I just find out, what meeting are we talking about? The last one in the zone, which would have been.
No, no, what's, what's on that paper right there, on the, the twenty-sixth, what you said, I think?
Right, yes.
Now, that whole issue is conversation about that property, who owned what, uh, or property owner's stuff and all that, but anyway, I'm, 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 I'm gonna show you, and I'm gonna add information out to you all. This is turner road here, this is castle, uh, and this is still a state, so we talked about the property on both sides, property owners on the east side and property owners on the west side, all of the property on the west side and others on the property on the east, on, uh, east side, and I thought we put the, set it home down there. But what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give each one of you all.
I think we just, we just, we just, for the house, not, not saying it wrong, but.
Okay, but this, this, this line, I just saw a photo.
What, what's that, what you said?
This here, uh, okay, this is one. But this, that's only five over there, and.
I would suggest you keep this. You know, we're, I thought, uh, 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 no, they don't have to read it, all I wanna do, is show them the picture, I wonder if they have a picture of what I'm talking about.
Ah, okay, okay.
They're gonna turn it over, that's, that's the picture.
Okay.
It, you know, so they can see what's happening.
So, I want to, I want to focus in on these, on the fence lines, on, on both sides. Okay, I want to focus in on, on the fence line on both sides, the fence lines represent the property boundary line, this was done by Pan American Engineers, okay? Over here on the west side, uh, this is my property here, this is ten acres, now, when that rope was put in there, the fence line represented the boundaries of, of the east side of the property, now, so, the parish, these are parish roads. And the owners had to donate their property, make some kind of arrangements with the parish footman, put that road in there, so, so for fifth, for a turner road, the property came from this side, and on fifth street road, it came from my side, so I have property on the other side too, okay, but it belongs to the parish, because it's parish roads.
It don't, it's, it's still, it's still under, it was part of the, uh.
Okay, okay, who was it, okay, okay, but anyway, just, those, this, these people here that are complaining, when they bought their property, they did not buy the portion that they're talking about, they purchased a smaller portion of their property.
Their map shows they own property on that side of the road, and they told me this is a simple matter.
Okay, that's the basis.
They say it's a matter of convenience, that they don't say what you did.
Okay, okay, look at the finish, oh, look at, please, please, okay, okay, see, it's, it's easy to listen to somebody else than look at the truth.
I saw the map.
A map is information, but if you wanna know the truth about a piece of property, you look at the property description, that's the truth.
Once the property started, they pretty clear the code, that's official documents.
Okay, that's where this came from.
Okay, the official documents.
Okay, now, right, the property we're talking about is thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six square feet, that's the property, okay, but in the deed, it says that they subdivided the property, and they acquired the portion that's on that same map what you said, that you look at, if you look at that map real good, in fact, I got a copy of the map right there, I'm, I'm sure that you can do this. Okay, the map consists, the original map consists of thirteen thousand square feet, but it was subdivided down to thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety.
Right, I realize what this says, but they have something that looks just like this, contradicts what you said, so that makes it a simple matter, you have to bring a court of, uh, this is how, we can't make a decision on land.
You can't, you know, it's, it's too overland, you know, it's, okay, okay.
They believe their map is just as perfect as you believe your map is.
That's a still, this is not, this is not my map, this is they map, that who give from that the wizard and jill, that I can't, okay, okay, so, I, I, I can do, uh, 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 okay, that property been in my town for over a hundred years, and the boundaries have never been changed, we had a succession, and the succession confirmed with these maps, and I cannot change the boundaries, and matter of fact, when we had that property, those people weren't even born. I wouldn't want to get out of you, so, I'm just, I'm just giving you, uh, it was a question, um, I'd love to get you, I could fill it up to the two forty, do you think you would go?
Okay, 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 but still, no, people, people don't have the right of life, and I'm always stick up for disadvantaged and poor people, is how I would deal with it, okay?
The fact that, um, that being said, your original maps doesn't have a date, they're saying, let's say, for instance, it's been a hundred something years, you got a new map that says, hey, I've been having this since, just start a date, nineteen forty-five, those folks that moved up here in nineteen eighty, so your old map should still, you know, supersede, supersede their map, and you just can't come in and take property from it, so you can't, that's what you said, if you have all that in order, like you say, it's still gonna be a simple map, so if you have all that in place, then it should be a long brand, you know, the court, court, you know, you have all this stuff stamped on your business map, and it's in, you know, food and that, and the courthouse and all, so you, you should, you should fly through it.
I just don't like the fact that people can lie and get away with it, people every day, and, 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 people, people listen to those people that lie, and then when I come along with the truth, I got jumped through the loop, but anyway, I appreciate your time.
I'm not your current, you know, let's get it right to the court, get it right, okay, right, fine, okay, we're making the door up as far as I can, thank you. Okay, get them one thing, for pointing this rap.
All right, this is a, a trash truck that we bid, my back, we opened it, uh, last week, and all we bid, we had was from Covington Sales and Circus, that was in the, uh, for the amount of two hundred seventy-four miles, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, that includes training and everything, I'm probably gonna come up to explain a little bit.
That's a, uh, uh.
This, this is to replace one of the ones that continue to have, since they break every week, so, I mean, y'all have any questions for prosecutors who come up here?
Yeah, I'm here for Covington, so, I can just see if y'all have any questions, um.
They may, they probably answer better than I.
Did Mike do this again?
Okay. Everybody want to do it?
Here, do you, if you got any service?
Okay, yes, I was just, I really, uh, got ready to, you know, supply here for the apartment there. But my question wasn't him. We already have two, so we just replace the ones that don't have two, two trash trucks that's, when you ready to load, it's inefficient, it is new.
Yes, sir. How many will you be, all of you, all three of them? Behind, because like I said, one of them seems to break. Eric can't take it out. Like, one of them's in the shop right there. Can we get it back for breaks?
We got it back. We got it back for breaks.
So typically, what's we normally, always in the shop, is it the same?
It's, it's, it's the old, it's the older one that's, we just got on the road. So you know, it's, 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 it's just, just wear and take it, pushing them since up for too long.
And they've been having to drive home to the express, just to, which is quite a haul.
Four hours each way?
Yes, sir. Four hours each way, you know, face, we're right there to dump shrines. And we also have mobile service, so we're, we're much closer.
And these are still bills, but hit on one step.
When can we get the truck?
Uh, I can have a truck here to, please. I actually have it at the stop. We sell a ton of these, so I actually have some.
And it's been a struggle, he's not a replacement to buy this, we haven't, we cut back some money.
The quality is, these guys solid, they go solid truck. It's just a much higher end, higher quality, better built and shaped, plus we got the search for their levels.
I make a note that we go ahead and purchase the truck, we, we need, we got to add.
I said.
Yes. Uh, first we brought up, what kind of warranty do we have on this?
So it's kind of year, a year on everything? Boom, body, chassis. The chassis is a little different.
From other, yeah, one for one year?
Yeah, everything's covered, pretty sure.
And, and hopefully, with, with this one, and the two we have running right now, Frosty's, he has a list where they know better. And as soon as we get this one, and we call it up, we descend, we will put everybody on the schedule. So that everybody will know exactly where those trash trucks should be.
Do we have a foot yet, Doctor?
Uh, I'm getting ready to start the process now. That's why I was gonna ask, who's gonna be, um, rating higher this process is gonna go?
I, I can do a lot of work off rate, but that'd be a problem. We hired two right now, right? And as soon as we get those hired, we're gonna, uh, come back to you all once we get those clear on the budget for two more. We also put another crew on the grass stuff. Also, so we don't fall behind in, in the other things. People off all the time.
Hey, we didn't wanna catch up, man. We gonna, we have to find, we gonna, we have to find something.
And look, they've been working on the weekends, and if y'all have anything that y'all want to pick us, please send email or send Frosty one. Cause I told those guys that if I'm gonna continue paying you overtime, we was doing it for the graders, we doing it for the grass stuff, we doing it for the, uh, trash truck went on, went on, it cost, I had to beat the bell and that. And say, look, we got y'all overtime, we got y'all, we're trying to get y'all the equipment, but y'all have to do what y'all was in doing now. And they all agreed, and they all understood. Well, it's very positive, even I, I think they all understand what they're, what's expected. We're, we're trying our best on you all and us to get them equipment, keep, get it fixed and baked where it runs. Where they not where they're. We're doing our part until this time is over.
Mr. Brown, I, I would kinda hate for what he's saying. Everybody knows here I'm for good, but we need it. This man will be a teller. But he's as only as good as himself. He can't control everybody else. So we buy this truck, they need to be accountable for taking care of it.
There you go, you're right.
I'm not talking about, man, you shouldn't have done that. I'm talking about being accountable.
That's my question, that's right.
When you get that truck every day, clean, ready, it ain't, it ain't jumped out, be accountable. And when they come back, we gonna do the right thing.
Operating that equipment to proper weight.
Clean it up.
That's right.
I see that training is included. Are you gonna make, Mr. Frosty, the training kind of mandatory, even if everybody thinks they know what they're doing?
It's family, you know. I mean, me personally, I believe more than just two should be trained on that. The crew should be somewhat knowledgeable. That way, if one doesn't show, you know, we don't have to shut down. We always got somebody to fall back on, to be able to operate.
And when we come to do the training, I mean, I would recommend everybody sign, sign in with the training. That way, if something happens in the future, y'all just gotta, don't have to go through that.
And this one, this one is a little different. It's a little bit.
It's, it's just new.
Big look to the truck you pulled in.
It's a little different, it's a lot more heavy duty. Uh, the swing ratio is ten times better than the ones that we have.
It's off with three sixteen. Four hundred twenty-five degree.
Right.
With this one, where's the elements just under the side?
Without having to pick up and then just move forward to.
So if you have a sore gum, you can go straight down the road and actually reach to the front side of the truck on either side and actually grab that stuff and just clean it up.
Reach up and tear it?
Yes, yes, it's a lot better. Equipment on the one, we can work this, that, and all the favor. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Very nice, Mark. No, no problem.
Okay, can I say, I should stand by it, to bring the new extension, see me, very good.
They said their, uh, they're good with it. I would suggest we take it. I'll say anything about, we'll take both of them. I think they run in March, twenty-nine, next year.
That might make you, give us time to re-need it.
Yeah, we, uh.
We did that year.
Yeah, I make a motion that we.
Well, you got them on that separate, you need to do both of them. You got them on that separate.
Same what you do with the site time.
Same.
Same.
Uh, two items, IMA is approved, monthly invoices.
Discussion, question on, you know, the favor.
And phone.
Okay, be, recommend that you should appoint CPO, yeah, for you that flood plane manager.
Uh, um, before we go anywhere, I'd like to voice my opinion. That's some reflection on Mr. Williams, he's doing a great job as, as building inspector. I, and I'm not for Neil Jones, but I would like to show, is, where's he at? Out here. That he can handle both jobs. And whatever little bit of money we're gonna give him now, that it stays until we decide what we're doing in a long range plan. Because it, it's always well, I'm loaded up, and then I gotta do this, and I gotta do that, and I'm not getting it done. So, I, I just.
As he, as he went and completed certification.
No, no, you don't have to certify. You can go be certified, you don't have to certify.
And, and there's really no need for him to go get certified. Like I said, you don't get any point for him to certify. Uh, and I talked to Mr. Donald a little earlier today about this, Jeff and I spoken about this, and he's, he don't have a lot of blood planning stuff up here. And again, it doesn't take a lot, a lot of time. And he's comfortable, he's looking to do it.
That's why I was asking you, is he comfortable doing it?
Yeah.
Well.
What he been doing.
I just want to see that he's able to continue to do the job he's doing and not be interfered with. That's, that's what I.
Maybe especially, they see all these doors, they need to, they need flood plane, and it's a big issue. They said to offer him any flood plane, and his flood plane manager, let Mr. Old, uh, I don't know, go back and get prepared for it. For, on flood plane management. If you're certified for, for a plane, it's a big deal.
And it's the savings that parish, the last one y'all had, I think it was right at thirty-six thousand, my fourth mission, thirty-five, thirty-six thousand, so you didn't invest for thirteen thousand. Um, I, I, it's, and again, if, if I'd not had a conversation with Jeff, I, I'd say wait. I've had a conversation with Jeff. He's very confident that he can do this without any, I mean, cause, you know, he's in, he's in office all morning. And he reviews plans, and when that time, anything else, but he, he leaves about eleven, eleven, thirteen million expectations he has, he gonna do it in space. So he's here every morning. And like I say, someone wants to look at the plans. There again, I, I feel very comfortable with that. But right now, in the future, depends on how, how busy the parish gets, as, as to what you got to do. But right now, he's very confident, he's been doing it.
And in two weeks, the National Weather Service is rolling out a new flood plane program that anybody that wants to get on it can go to the class and learn how to do their program. They will predict what your water level to get to and everything else. And it's a program they've earned at free of charge for anybody that goes to it. So it'll be in about two weeks. I sent Jeff the email today on this. Cause I mean, they, they can predict pretty close to what your water's gonna do based on how many inches of rain you get.
Can we have a motion? I make a motion, maybe you're trying to, yeah, of course.
Same. Question on the one, you know, the favor? And a phone.
Our local record is not public.
I would rather pay me here, so you ask this, for what I go with.
I'm never gonna say, really, I'd say, but we talk to us, we talk to the camera, we talk to them, they're in the house.
Yes, ma'am. He, he was at the finance meeting, and I spoke to him, uh, one-on-one to make sure, cause I have safety ties that you did. I wanted to make sure that he was prepared to take all the extra.
To do work.
So, you want a, a statement?
Two statements. Do it, you know the favor?
Uh.
You understand it, it's Jeff's.
No, sir, that's yeah, thank you.
How do you work in the courts, it's different. Here's a problem, you should look it up. Turn it forward, come here. Come as a crew, this is the other.
I just kind of update you. We almost complete with the ash removal and dirt from the, uh, site. It's just with all the rain that's come in, and the dirt being so soft, we having to wait for it to dry out. We went from drought to now, uh, all of it wet. We were scheduled for last Friday to come in, water the courthouse, but God help us out. We got the courthouse watered pretty good. We expecting some more and all to come in, so it's gonna need every bit it can get right now. But we're prepared with our fire department, if they ever come in and help water it, it's deeper loose than those big old trees.
I have a question, but off the record, we can't see relation anywhere. I got a call for Red People. Probably have no way of changing, just wondering if anyone.
They have a generator already. All you have is a manual oil throttle on it. That would have to be going inside, just flip the switch back there on the big generator.
Oh, you got the question, I didn't have so much to about it.
And we're still waiting to hear back from the generators for all these projects on the health unit and DTW warehouse for the permanent generators. But I'll, it's just, it's still tied up with FEMA. It's toward the end of it now, cause they requested to, uh, find a lot of information from us. Uh, discussing take action or request to install diesel generator hookup at DTW warehouse. Uh, we have a generator, the control panel come in, we've been waiting about six to seven months on that panel to come in. Because we can manually, that's where to make it run, but it wasn't safe. So we got the panel and all, and, uh, Mark Blackwood's, uh, doing it right now. He has the, has the house repairing that part of it.
I make a question.
Same.
So what discussion?
I wanted to know, I was just curious, which, this come out of your fund or DTW? How, how would this be funded?
That'd be DTW right now.
Okay.
Cause that's gonna be helping them, cause the generator right now, we don't need it anywhere, but with all this storm and all that we had, uh, at least we can have it, it's a portable hookup, whether it is, it's, when you like to dig weldings, plugs, you walk over there, plug it in, tie the generator up, and it'll run. I'll see, that way we have it. So if we need to hook it up there or somewhere else with these portable hookups, we can move it over and wire it, to have it wired in. All we, one person can take it over, plug it in, frame it up, throw the switch.
Any more question?
I have a question. Um, it's. On Mark Blackwood, is he, uh, certified in our parish as an optician?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think he's registered for twenty twenty-four. So we just wanna make sure.
Okay, well, I gotta get the bids on it anyway.
Okay.
So it'd be Ronco, and I get the R C, and I could probably get Buffalo Electric to get the three bids, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's clear, that he does register.
Yeah, okay, I'll check with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
But, uh, that's all we need on there, is to be able to have it hooked up, so if we do get a hurricane or another storm, uh, if, if no power in there right now, probably run into, there's no ice, everything down, all that. So at least we have ice for the workers and all right there, that have it for here, cause it'd be on the generator system.
Two. All the favor?
Uh.
Don't move.
Same.
Mr. Dexter Armstrong?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills is absent. Mr. Richard Aldo?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakley?
Yes.
President Lewis King? President Willis King?